Good evening, all in attendance this evening and observing online. I'm Frank Sweeney, I'm deputy mayor. John Melfold is out of town this evening, and so I've been tasked with running the meeting. And I asked my fellow councilors that if I forget something, please, please, don't be shy. This evening, I'm calling this meeting to order at this point. And I would like to ask Mark Panassidi to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we take communications from the public on any matter that is not on our public hearings, and since we have no public hearings this evening, I'll take public comment on anything either on the agenda or not that you'd like to... Does anybody have public comment? Please, name and address for the record, please.
David Martin, I live at 816 Texas Avenue, and I came for this next meeting, but I came to this other meeting earlier, and I would just... I'm just smacked by number five on these consent... or number C on the consent agenda, consideration or request for Whitefish Lake. And I just spoke to Councilmember Sweeney about what goes on here, and that it appears that they meet all the regulations, and therefore you all are going to approve it. I just would like to say, I hope you look at every regulation, because here's another example of more development, more boats on Whitefish Lake, more jet skis, more noise, more people. And we just got through this meeting saying, okay, what's the right level? Have we reached the tipping point? Boom. Here on the consent agenda is a, yeah, okay, let's have more. It just seems like it's almost automatic. So, I'm not going to object, I'm too late to object, I think, but I would urge you all to look very closely at these things and not have the mindset that growth is good. Because I honestly think I've seen it before with towns that don't think about it and don't do what they can to achieve balance and not always have growth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else this evening? Please.
Hi, my name is Catherine Owens, I live at 329 Shady River Lane, and I just want to reiterate something that I wrote about in the paper and on Facebook, and Rebecca had mentioned, responded on a Facebook page, that she would talk to you about opening Central Avenue to pedestrian only on Tuesdays and Thursday evening, from... just to try it from 5:00 on. And having all the restaurants be able to pull their tables out, so they get maximum seating, the shops can pull their racks out, you have people walking back and forth, you have open air. At one end, if it's something that the public likes, at one end, you could even, on one evening, you could have a band play at the end of, maybe just north of 93. Some of the big complaints were, oh, traffic and this and that. Well, you leave 93 a thoroughfare, you let everybody continue up north and south as normal, but you just do those two blocks between 93 and railway, I think it's railway or first. Anyway, and I don't know, I just would like you to consider doing that, because my sister was telling me about it, in the East Coast, they do it. And it's so great, it would bring business, parents can sit there, the kids can run around, friends can walk around and shop and share what they've bought and say, oh, go to this store, it's still open. I mean, I think everybody wins, it's outdoors, you can do social distancing. And anyway, I just would like you to consider, maybe try it one Tuesday, one farmer's market evening, and see if it works. And one of the biggest pushback, I think, was handicap parking, but I think you can make the garage, maybe make more handicap parking spaces in the garage here, or I think that can be mitigated. But anyway, I'm just asking the council to kind of consider doing something like that. I think it'd be really, really lucrative for the businesses in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Okay, any volunteer board reports from the public? Not seeing any, any from council? No volunteer board reports, okay. That moves us on to our consent agenda for this evening.
I have some corrections to the minutes.
Okay.
I've sent these to Michelle, but page two, Counselor Henning, complaint drive, and then I added a "n". Page three, first paragraph, last sentence, add an "s" after measure. Page four, Counselor Henning, agree, add a "d" after that. And Counselor Quinell, add in, it is not only to prevent death and prevent yourselves from getting it, and then C, add an "s", and that's it. And the regular minutes were great. Thank you, Michelle, for being so meticulous.
Given those corrections, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the corrected minutes.
Moved by Counselor Fury and seconded by Counselor Norton. All in favor? All opposed? And it passes unanimously. We have no public hearings this evening, and next we move on to communications from our Public Work Director.
Good evening. I guess I'd say deputy mayor and council. So this is a request for the... I'm not going to go through the entire staff report, you guys have heard this every time we do a new project and a new request for proposals. I think everybody's well aware of the council policy that was established back in 1990 for selection of consultants. When it was originally established, that number was $10,000, so any contract in excess of $10,000 had to go through a rather strict selection policy. Back in 2016, council changed that policy to follow the Montana Code annotated, which increased that number to $50,000. So, the next resort tax priority project is Edgewood Place and Texas Avenue, and we are currently in the process of advertising for proposals for an engineering consultant. That consultant will be responsible for the design of approximately 2,530 feet of Edgewood Place, which would be Wisconsin Avenue to the county line, as well as about 3,500 feet of Texas Avenue from Edgewood to the north end of Texas. The eventual scope of work for the engineer... I might be a little loud. ...will include surveying, engineering design, public relations, and construction management services. However, given the current uncertainty of resort tax revenues, we're anticipating that the initial scope of work will just include surveying. We can get that surveying done hopefully this fall before it snows, and then take a look at resort tax revenue and figure out if we can move forward with the project. The current budget in the current capital improvement program is $2 million. I anticipate that will cover most of the projects, and there's about $400,000 in the resort tax budget for engineering in fiscal year '21. So, in accordance with the policy, I'm recommending that the council appoint myself and Karen Hilding to serve on the rating panel, and then we'll also need to create a selection panel, which I recommend would include myself and Karen and one council member. So with that, I just look for a motion from council to create the rating panel and the selection panel.
Thank you. Any questions for Craig?
Craig, this is totally unrelated, but is there a place where... not totally unrelated, where we can find the list of projects and what order they're in? Or can you just send it to me? Maybe I'll just email you.
Absolutely, yeah, I can send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's no problem.
Craig, this is another kind of random, unrelated, but related. Given the numbers of resort tax renovations of streets and everything around here, and we're always doing them, we're continually working through them, does it make sense for us as a city to have on staff a structural engineer or to manage these projects or to be able to design and build these projects?
You know, it really takes... I think that Whitefish still hasn't... we're still not at the size where we really can afford to have an entire engineering department. It takes a team of engineers to design these projects, everything from surveyors to CAD specialists, to project managers. And I think in order to design a project, you know, of this scale or of most of the street projects that we do, we probably need to hire three engineers, and I'm just not sure that we could support that level of full-time employees.
Okay, and that's my question, is that, are we still in that position? So, thank you. Okay, council, I think we need a motion, and somebody who wants to volunteer to participate on the selection committee.
Move that we appoint a selection panel, an interview panel for the Edgewood and Texas reconstruction project with Craig Workman and Karen Hilding to serve on both panels. And I am not nominating myself to serve on the selection panel.
I'll second. Is there interest from anyone on the council or availability from anyone on the council to be able to participate?
I would be willing to volunteer for that, as long as it is known that I also live on that road.
That's fine. I don't think that's a conflict for you at all. And in case would... Steve, does your motion include appointing Ben as the council member?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Ben.
And is that okay with the second?
That's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, like sign, see none, that passes unanimously. Michelle, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item... we're moving on to item number eight, we're cruising right along here, communications from our finance director on a resolution relating to $11 million water system revenue bond.
Good evening, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Council. You have before you a resolution relating to $11 million in water system revenue bonds, consisting of a $6 million Series 2020A and a series, a $5 million Series 2020B bond. And it's related to the water treatment plant project, which you've been hearing a lot about over the last several weeks. The city received approval of our request for the use of a state revolving fund totaling $11 million of those two bonds. The proposed financing includes the issuance of these two bonds, and it's a 2.5% interest rate for 20 years, and it will help us pay for the construction, which you heard Craig, our Public Works Director, mentioned a couple weeks ago, that that contract was awarded to Swank Enterprises. And I just wanted to make note that the project is expected to be substantially complete by August 30th of 2021, and the potential targeted closing date for these bonds would be September 23rd, 2020. And it authorizes the city manager and the mayor to close the financing transaction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the proposed bond resolution you have before you tonight.
Any... Rebecca?
When we do bonds, does it just go to the open market, or do they go into a certain... like, can anybody in Whitefish buy some of these bonds, or is it institutional, and how does that work?
These bonds are issued through the state's revolving fund, so it's really a transaction that exists within that financing structure at the state, and we become a part of their overall issuance. And perhaps Dana has a little bit more experience here beyond that, but I think that's my understanding of how that occurs.
So the state goes through the open bond process for selling bonds. We haven't had a bond on the open market, I think, since our last SID, 166, was probably the most recent one, but SRF, the rates that they have secured for us are good rates, and so it also reduces a lot of work on our end for public issuance statements and processing, so.
Rebecca?
Thank you for the question.
If I might follow up here, I think your question, your answer, your question really was, can anybody in Whitefish, if they wanted to buy one of these bonds, is that really your question?
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at bonds today myself, and so then I was thinking, how come we don't get to buy them? And then I realized that the state brokers these for us, and so it's an institutional kind of thing, so normal people don't really buy bonds from cities unless it's in a municipal package.
Unless the municipality itself is the direct issuer into the market.
Right.
In this particular proposal, it gets funneled through that state process.
And it's stable, it's more stable for us as taxpayers to have that oversight, and where it's a legal requirement.
And also, I think the state is able to get us a great rate at which we are able to participate at that rate over the 20 years of the proposed loan that we're presenting before you tonight.
Any other questions for... Okay. I'll need a motion of some kind or character. Any?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution 20-21, which is a resolution relating to $11 million in water system revenue bonds, DNRC Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Program, and that would be consisting of $6 million Series 2020A bond and $5 million Series 2020B bond, and authorizing the issuance and fixing the terms and conditions as presented to us this evening.
Moved by Counselor Fury and seconded by Counselor Norton. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Michelle, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And next we have communications from our city manager.
Hi, good evening. I have a few updates for this evening. First, I do want to bring to everybody's attention that we are aware of the incident that occurred at Farmer's Market last Tuesday. The Farmer's Market is a special event that has required a special event permit, and through that permitting process, the entire park and the surrounding right-of-way, including the sidewalks, have been set aside for this event as exclusive use. So the organizer has the ability to turn away any people that are there, they have the ability to turn away any vendors, and they have a very specific vendor process. So last Tuesday, there was a group that tried to set up in the corner, handing out stickers, and one of the persons was also wearing and had an open carry AR, so a rifle. And the police were called, and they did respond and asked the individuals to leave, and they did. But I want everybody to be aware that we always have our police officers in downtown during the Farmer's Market, at the Farmer's Market, in a normal day. And if there's a call that they have to respond to within the city limits, obviously, they're going to have to respond to that. As you know, we have a limited police force. But that being said, I want you all to be, you know, rest assured that we will have officers there this next Tuesday in case this event occurs again, and to support them and making sure that their event is ran within their... with what we've provided them as the use of that park. So if there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. I'd also like to update you that our building inspector, who we had here for 10 years, his last day was last week, so we are in the process of hiring a new building inspector. We have that going on internally. Today it was posted. So of course, while we're in a really busy time in building and planning also, short-staffed, we are trying to get those hired as fast as possible. And then the last update I have is the budget update. So Ben and I have been working very hard to try to catch up on year-end and training through that process, but we did receive our taxable value today, and it was very positive. In fact, what I had estimated at a 46.47% growth actually came in at 49.64%. So our taxable value is actually higher than what I anticipated. I would like to think that that's actually just due to new taxable property that's been owed to us for a while. And so what we'll see through that is, we will see a restriction on the number of mills that we can levy with that, but as we look forward, cash balances are looking very positive for our property tax supportive funds. We know that we've submitted over $680,000 for CARES funding for reimbursement for costs that are eligible, and we will do so again if they extend that period of when we can request funds. Resort tax also came in higher than I had projected, which is great. We had some delinquencies that were fairly large that we were able to collect. So the good news is, is that we have the Haskell Basin Bond issue where we said we might not be able to fund the entire payment, looks like it can be completely funded if we can at least collect the same as what we collected last year. Obviously, July and August are going to be triggers for that, so it might be, it might still run short, but hopefully we see a continued spending within our economy. And overall, pretty impressive that our resort taxes are staying fairly steady, just knowing that the Canadian border is closed through the end of the month. And I just spoke to somebody from Canada, and now they're talking about potentially through, you know, further on, I don't know that they'll go to January 1st, but she said there is rumblings of that until a vaccine is available. So, in that though, what I've talked about in my manager's report was, as we look toward the budget and what we'll be considering at the next council meeting, or what you'll be, excuse me, you'll be considering at the next council meeting, I'm looking at using the additional funds to, from the CARES funding and having a good taxable value to address a few items. One would be the ambulance that we were planning to finance with an intercap loan. I believe we can fully cash fund that purchase now, that saves interest over the five-year loan. Also looking at providing a reduced mill levy. We'll keep assessments flat, but actually consider doing a reduced mill levy, because we can still grow our cash reserves to a reasonable amount. We have yet to figure out what that dollar might, or that reduction might look like. And then LED, the LED project at the ESC is something I'm considering, looking at getting a quote. You know, we've talked about it at our last meeting with the Climate Action Plan update, was that we're doing it piece by piece, but police and fire, a good portion of it, $688,000 is for police and fire wages. So what's not better than to improve that facility where they operate out of and reduce operating costs over time? And then, of course, we'll be looking at savings to make sure that we can weather COVID moving forward for both the police and fire. So those are my updates on the budget at this time. We will work on getting an updated change of spreadsheet prepared and cash balances compared to the funds for you guys, and we'll have that available as soon as possible. We are a little bit behind compared to normal, but continuing to work diligently on that. And if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Big question. This is related to the taxable income, and it's just my own ignorance on the tax issue. Do we tax people, second homeowners, at a different rate than people who live full-time in a home?
No, we do not. They are all taxed based on the value of their property, and that's state-driven, how we do that.
Okay, so that was my next question. Is there any mechanism within the state to potentially take a look at that? I just know that in Hawaii, if you had a second home there, the tax structure was completely different for you as a second homeowner rather than a primary resident.
Yeah, we would have to, it would have to be a bill at the legislature for them to consider. They do have a surta... I don't know what the word is. Higher tax for properties that are over, I think, 1.3 million, so they do, the improvement, so they do take into account those that are higher-valued properties do get taxed at a higher rate, but not for second homeowners. So it would, we would have to develop a bill and find a legislator to carry a bill like that. I think it might be a challenge. I think it would be a challenge to get that through our current legislature.
Okay, so there's nothing currently that allows?
Nothing currently, no, no. But we do, for our water and sewer rates, you know, they all pay the same base rate, no matter if they're here or not. In fact, that was the call I had with a person from Canada, was that they're paying, you know, their rates regardless of being able to come visit their properties, but explain that, you know, the fixed rates, the base rates that they are paying is to keep the treatment plant and the, both treatment plants, I guess, operating, and making sure that they have the capacity for when they return.
Okay, thank you. It's something I'll look into, thanks.
Any other questions for Dana? Any?
Yeah, just, I was going to bring this up at the end of the meeting, as long as you did it now, in regard to the, here, I'll take this off, in regard to the incident last Tuesday night, I'm just kind of wondering if we could get Angie to weigh in on, I know the state prohibits open and concealed carry in governmental buildings. I'm wondering if we would have the ability to do that on city property or as associated with any special use permits, i.e. the Farmer's Market or whatever that would be, Oktoberfest, for example. I see no practical purpose in carrying an assault weapon to the Farmer's Market, quite frankly, other than to intimidate. That's the, and I'm guessing that outside of the person that carried it there, everyone else was probably pretty intimidated by it and found it a little disconcerting. And I know we're wading into probably very murky waters in a really ugly public hearing in the event that we try and do something, but that said, I'm wondering if Angie could take a look at that and see if that was at least a possibility for us. I would certainly support an ordinance to make that happen in the event that it was possible for us.
I do believe an ordinance like that is possible. Her and I did discuss that before she left, and there is state law that allows us to pass an ordinance regarding open carrying on public property, which would include our parks. As long as I haven't misspoke, though, if I can get a forehead nod, I'll have Angie start looking at that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Good, you've got all of us.
Great.
Rebecca, a couple of questions?
So, one question had to do with our, when people are using profanity in a public venue, either in the written form or talking to someone, yelling at someone else, could you address what our laws are about that, Dana?
Yeah, so we have received some complaints regarding signs used by our protesters that use the F-word, and so we have looked into it. Our disorderly or disturbing the peace code does not allow individuals to swear at one another and use profane language. However, you know, what I have heard is going back and forth, you know, you hear people from vehicles yelling at the protesters and vice versa. So it becomes a very tricky area for issuing any type of citation, but I did reach out to them to see if they'd consider changing their signs. But it is a possibility that somebody could be cited for disorderly conduct under disturbing the peace code. Chief Dial, did I say anything wrong? Nope. Okay, we're good. Sorry, can always check with the experts here.
Yeah, expert. The second question I had is, how do we update our pandemic response? So, a few people, probably three or four people have actually sent around and asked me about doing cafe-style dining downtown, and initially we decided not because of safety concerns, and then Chief Dial said, there's something about a liquor license with square footage, and then the disabled parking piece of it, and so, but is, that's just one area. Now there's also national discussion about some areas needing to shut down and go backwards because they're in a major flare-up of the virus. So how do we do that? And how do we revisit so the public knows that we're actually listening to their concerns and their wishes?
Yeah, you know, I would first encourage them to also reach out to staff. One of the things that, with the last discussion on having the open dining on Central Avenue was that we haven't heard from... was that we haven't heard from actually any of the restaurants owners, and they would have to make an investment to actually put those out there. Unfortunately, Central Avenue, well, fortunately, unfortunately, right, it slopes down to provide for water drainage, so you can't really have people sitting on an angle. It's not really the right, the right size. So a lot of times, what you see in other communities is they build a platform out and they put in, some, most, some of them are permanent, and so you would have some type of, you know, cost to do that. So, you know, if they're restaurant owners, I'd be interested in hearing from them, definitely. From citizens, I understand that it's a great idea to keep you out in the open air. Challenges obviously would be parking, but, but also vehicles driving right by where people are sitting. What I would like to encourage is, you know, take, take your order to go and sit at Depot Park. We could look at putting, you know, picnic tables out there. Obviously, the contamination from touching surfaces has somewhat been reduced compared to actual respiratory droplets. So is that something we could look at, helping out for, you know, to go and take and eat at the park kind of a style thing? But, but yes, if, I mean, if the council as a whole wants to revisit that idea, we can, we can definitely look at it again. But I would like to see some intersectional from, from restaurant owners.
Well, I know Rhonda and Kevin were talking about it early on, so maybe we should just leave it at that and let the, let the restaurant owners and the chamber and heart of Whitefish kind of see if it's even feasible or if there's any will for that. Okay. And, and then the other part of the question is, if things start to get really hot here, do we have discussions about backing, backing down with openings, like closing bars early or not, not sheltering in place per se, but other ways?
So, you know, my understanding is, you know, the state right now, they're not looking at something like that, and that would probably come from the health officer at Flathead County. And in fact, talking with the school district as we plan for schools reopening and we provided before and after school care, they've also been informed that what would likely happen is we're going to stay in the phase we are and they'll just add restrictions as they see cases go up. From a city standpoint, I think Angie and I, and I speak on our behalf without her here, but I think it's very difficult to go into any type of lodging shutdown when there is no quarantine for, for visitors from out of state. We really use that as a strong supportive why we needed to close down our lodging facilities. Restaurants and bars, you know, again, those are really regulated from a health standpoint by the Health Department. So I think what we're going to focus on, though, is maybe messaging right now. I did talk to Brian Schott about, maybe this week, talking about doing another outreach to remind people what we're supposed to be doing. I'd like to thank all the businesses that have really stepped up to have people wear masks because, you know, we could have seen a huge influx of complaints, but we haven't. You know, and if we do get a complaint, we talk to the business owners, and that's probably the last time we actually hear about that business. So I do want to say thank you to them as well in this PSA or whatever we decide to put out.
Any other questions for Dana? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And under our communications from the mayor and city councillors, we have a letter from one Hishorn. Any interest in discussing that, or any, anybody want to have any discussion about that this evening?
I don't have a way to...
Mike?
Sorry, you guys. I don't know. Dana, do you want to address it? Because I know it comes up periodically. This had to do with vegetation, but...
So the challenge we face is that we have weed ordinance that does not allow weeds, but we do not have a height ordinance requiring a certain height of grass. So this property might not have weeds on it. If it does, we can spray for it, but if it does, has just regular grass that's growing in excess heights, there is no requirements for, you know, whether you keep it six inches or lower. So that's my understanding. It's been the challenge for this specific property.
Dana, it might, given where this lot is, and River Lakes Parkway and River Lakes Drive, is there a homeowners association that's associated with this property? And if so, my guess is that the, her, her option really here is to seek enforcement of the homeowners regulations, which I'm sure will have those kinds of things in them, is a good source for her to go to the homeowners association and see what they can do.
Yes, and that is correct. I actually thought about that earlier today and then just didn't research where her property, this property was, but I would assume that there is an HOA or a certain types of CCNRs that would at least cover the vegetation height, because that is generally done by our, the HOAs in the area, or in our city.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to say, it sounds like we did what we can, major went out there and walked the property line and, you know, that, somebody's upset that the empty lot has high grass on it.
Okay. Thank you. The other item we have consideration this evening is the request of, on the renewed request from AltaVista's LLC to extend the remaining 240,000, 249,000 cash in lieu of affordable housing into two payments this evening. Any further discussion or any thoughts on the matter from council?
Yeah, I think our discussion at the last meeting still stands for the most part. I don't, granting a year is way too long, in my opinion. This should have been paid a year ago, but we made a special deal a year ago to make it not have to be paid all at once. And then we wouldn't get our first payment on this until December, and maybe, Dana, you can, if you could step up and just say when we need that money for the, for the snow lot. You know, it seems like the timing would be off if we go with this proposal.
So the snow lot, obviously, we, we hope that we're well underway, and the cash portion that the city's providing is, is anticipated to be used upfront to save on financing costs. So ideally, we would have the funds available within the fiscal year of '21. There, we do have reserves available to float it if this was to go through, you know, June 30th. I do know that Mark's here, and they have reasons of why they picked July 31st. But from a financial standpoint, I think as long as we finish the year off in '21 with all funds on hand, the city would, in effect, be able to, to cover that short-term loan to AltaVista's, or short-term delay in payment, I should say.
Does anybody want to hear from Mr. Panassini this evening? Mr. Panassini, you want to add anything this evening?
I'm really, there's many questions, yeah. Mayor, city council, as you know, we did have a 249,000 payment that we made, that was, apparently it was on time. It was made in December. We agreed to make another $249,000 this July. Due to the COVID situation, we had, we had two sales from January up until June. And trying to keep the construction going with even the delays of construction, we tried to get loans deferred for it. Also, construction loans aren't able to get deferred, unfortunately. So with the lack of sales, we just don't have the funds to cover it. In the construction delay, we did not have those funds. Now, since June, middle of June, we've seen a completely different energy here in Whitefish. Month of July, we had 13 sales, 13 sales in one month. That's more than we've done in six months. So we're very optimistic. So we have 13 sales, the 10 units that are under construction finishing up in September. We're going to be, we proposed the two payment for December 31st and then another one in January, I'm sorry, July 31st, or sooner if we can do it. If we have the same kind of month in August, which we think we are, we're releasing another 14 units to be constructed September 1st with hammer requests right now. If those sales go the way they're going right now, we'll be sold out of that, reserved and sold out of that also, which will be going back to the drawing board at the end of August, hopefully, and releasing another phase. With the proposal we laid out right now, we're very comfortable knowing that we, we know we owe the money, we plan to pay it. I've got to keep the banks paid, though, too, to keep the construction going. That's why we do not have the money. December 31st, we know we can make $124,9900 payment. July 31st, we're very comfortable in telling you we can make that second payment, which would be, in July, would make the in-lu payment paid in full.
Can you, I understand your choice of July 31st. You've just heard Dana describe our financial problem, which is we need the funds to be available by June 30th of next year, no later. Can you commit to that?
We're looking at a schedule of how the construction ends up and the closings, and some of you guys are in construction. The way we're, I can't commit to it right this minute, but I told Dana, if we have another 13 sales come in immediately and we got construction starting again, another 10 units, we shouldn't have a problem. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what COVID's going to do. Right now, it's playing, we're benefiting from it, which is, you know, we're shocked. We're happy, but we're, we're benefiting from it right now. So we scheduled it out, construction-wise, how it would be in our states and closing times, thinking ahead, if we had 14 more units and another 14 units. It just came into about mid-July, so that's where we came up with that date. Now, if things go quicker, we would, we would pay it. So, I know I'm not answering your question, but...
It doesn't help me with my financial problem. Let's put it that way.
Mark, I have a question.
We've got a problem, but we've got a problem too.
Sure, I understand.
I have a question for you, Mark. What can you pay us now? I mean, we're already behind on the $249,000 that was due July 31st. And that, so it seems to me like we need something now to guarantee that, moving forward, if we're going to delay this for, to the end of next July, or even maybe the end of next June, that we need, we need you to have a little more skin in the game than waiting until December 31st to pay us half of what you already owe us from this past July, and then a full year later, we get the rest of it. I would much rather see some sort of, I think this needs to go back to the drawing board and see some sort of payment that's tied with the sales of the units that you're building, because we're already behind in what you owe us. And that, that's kind of, that's my, that's just where my, that's where I'm coming from in my perspective on this.
So the closings of the sales that we have coming in right now are paying off the construction loans. We're trying to catch back up on the construction loans. Without the construction loans, we don't have funding to continue the project. So we don't have any proceeds coming to me or the investors. We haven't seen one nickel yet. That money is paying off construction loans right now. So when we look at the schedule of closings coming up, a few now, the majority of them coming in September and October, we're able, that we feel comfortable, we will have, catching up with the construction loans, Glacier Bank, will have 124,900, no, 100, I'm sorry, 125,000 approximately by December 31st. They're taking all the money on every sale right now to bring the loans current. I'd love to give you 125,000 right now, if I can. We're pretty committed. We've already, we've already given you guys 250. I know we're out of our contract and our agreement, but we're asking for some more time due to the COVID. It shut us down literally from basically late January all the way up until the beginning of June. And that was a mandate from the state in Whitefish. We couldn't, we couldn't sell, couldn't do anything. Hands were pretty tied.
Rebecca, you have a question?
I, I think what Dana just said was that, whoops, we have the capacity to carry things for a little bit, and this is an unprecedented time where we were shut down in our city and in our state, and now things will pick up again. We've done this to help developers along when we went through the recession, too. We had multiple projects needing extensions. You guys remember that? I'm sure Andy does. I'm sure you do, Frank. So I think is, the only thing I would, I think we should give some grace to the situation, but if there's any way that you could bring the money home, like by June 1st, so we could be in compliance with our goals for the snow lot, that would be better for us. But I'm inclined to give you a break just because it is an unprecedented time. We were shut down. Things are starting to really boom again, but we are going into a recession as well. And so we need your project to be successful. It benefits the citizens of Whitefish for you to complete that project, because I've been around a long time, and I've seen a lot of projects that got abandoned, and it's not really what we want. We don't want blighted properties. We don't want abandoned projects. We want housing for work, the workforce housing to be completed. So that's my feeling about it. I, I don't know if you would be in agreement to upping that second payment timeline, but that's another idea.
So Rebecca, just to clarify, so you would be okay with them making a one-time payment of the 124,500 by December and then the remaining payment in June, June 1st?
I was, well, not, not necessarily asking for that, but I was thinking we accept the December payment, and then we up the timeline for the, for the payment, so it won't be in July of next year, it would be in June.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So we get the payment, we get the payment in December, and then instead of the next payment coming in July?
Yes.
We ask for it in June. Okay.
So that we can meet our goals, and that would give you enough time, but it would also keep your project viable, because that is what we want. We want you to have a really successful project there. We need housing, you know? So I just don't know if that's a possibility with your finances.
Any further comments or a proposal?
I, I just, I still think we need something that's tied more to the sales of the, of the units rather than just waiting. I just don't, I don't agree that we just set these arbitrary dates.
Andy?
I guess I'd be okay with the schedule. I'm not fond of it, but I'm not willing to do it without charging interest.
I'm sorry?
I mean, if we're asking, if we're being asked to be a bank, then let's be a bank. And I think we could come up with a reasonable interest rate and then make that second payment due June 30. So we take the December payment, and then the final payment would be June 30th, and we would charge whatever unreasonable interest rate that staff would come up with on the remaining balance on a declining basis.
I would second that. That's fine with me.
Could we hear from Dana, too, after that proposal, just since she's, knows everything?
Rebecca's not.
Okay, oh, she's okay with it?
Do we need to have, if, if I felt that if we do that, we would need some sort of a written enforcement provision, is that something that we should put in the motion as well?
I mean, that would be something that Angie would, I mean, basically, we have that now because we have the agreement in place that they owe us $249,000, period. And, you know, my logic is, and in part, it's on counsel from our council, that if Mark just refuses to pay us, our only remedy is to go to court and try and make Mark pay us. I'm guessing that that might happen, and that's going to cost everybody a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of heartache, and if we have a proposal, it's going to get us forward, and if that June date is critical for us... for us, we can push that up. We've obviously pushed it out, and if we get to June, and we look like we're okay, and you look like you still need 30 days, we can always talk again, but right now, that's what I would be comfortable with.
So, the June 30th date, not to make it this unclear, is really so that we don't have a loan from our general fund to our cash and lieu fund at year-end. Because what that shows is that we have a loan outstanding from our general fund, and it's directly tied to developer. That is, that is why I would like to see the June 30th date. Can we float the payment through July 31st with general fund cash? Yes, we have the financial capability of doing that. But from a financial standpoint, what we're gonna report on our June 30th financial statements, you know, that just, I, I don't personally like how that looks from a financial standpoint. As for an interest rate, I'm sure we can look up what the construction loan rate is right now and work through that. We could even work with what maybe Mark is getting on their current construction loan rates, because I think that that would show, you know, what they're, what they're approved for, I guess, from a bank standpoint. But, if that's maybe something I want to include in your motion, that way, it's not arbitrary from a staff perspective.
Yeah, I'm not talking a paycheck loan here. I want, you know, I want to be fair to Mark, and I want to be fair to us at the same time. And that's what I'm trying to do here. And I understand from a financial and accounting standpoint, it is tricky for us to do that, not undoable, which is why I say, should everything all go in the toilet again, then we will have the option of obviously looking down. But anyway, I think I have a motion on the floor, and I do have a second.
Oh, can I, one clarifying question? Would the interest be starting to accrue from what date, I guess, for that?
July 31st, the date of the mispayment.
Of the mispayment? Okay, thank you.
At least, that's what my mortgage lender would do to me.
Might, might do a few more things than that, but yes. We have a motion and a second on, on the floor. Any further discussions?
I think it's really important that we have some compassion as we go through the pandemic, you guys. So far, our city is really strong financially, thanks to Dana and Ben, but we might be seeing some things that we're gonna have to accommodate, some changes. And, like, I just always remember sitting in the chamber when we were going through all those recession discussions, and we were, we were kind to people during those eras. Some projects never made it, but I think it's important that we have some flexibility when it was such an unprecedented event. So, thank you for listening to me.
Yeah, we'll recognize, Mark. Yep.
If June 30th, the date you're asking for comes, and for some reason, we need time and you guys can float it, I don't think we're going to. I'm trying to be conservative, so I don't come back and have to ask for this again, because it's not real comfortable doing this, to be honest with you. We're a company who stands by, and we make, we do what we say we're gonna do. I don't plan to abandon the project. It'll never, that'll never happen. We got way too much money in it. But, this is COVID-19. We've never experienced this. And, I mean, if you want an interest rate, we'll, we'll have to talk about, but this is a time where regular lenders on mortgages and whatever, they're deferring stuff. They're just deferring it, pushing it off. We tried to get Glacier Bank, but we understand, it's a construction loan. To keep construction going and not lose the subs that are on the job, we had delays, but not to lose some of these subs, and these are important subs that will, in a second, go over here to keep their families fed. We had to, we had to keep this going. There's no deferral that we had with this bank. Glacier Bank is our bank across the street. If it was another mortgage payment, like I said, they're willing to work with people. But a construction loan is completely different. You know, like I said, we'll, we'll agree to the June 30th, as long as, you know, like I said, I, if it's sooner, it's sooner. If we have the sales continue in August and September like this, we're golden. But, I don't have a crystal ball. I'm just letting you guys know, I'm just, this is, charging an interest rate, that's fine if you want to look at it, but this is a different time for all of us, and we're just trying to get through it, too, and hopefully, it washes out positive for all of us.
Andy, can I just kibitz here for a moment, or maybe think about a, maybe a friendly amendment to your motion, and that would be that we would, we would accept it, or maybe make the interest rate such that we pick the number, whatever was fair, but if the payments are made on time or early, then the interest is forgiven. But if it's late at any point, then the interest rate kicks in, and it's due. Does that make sense? And that, I think, provides an incentive maybe for Mark to get it paid early, so that he can avoid that problem. It probably something we can, the amount of money we're talking about is, it would be fair, but it's not gonna make or break his program, his project either way, and not, not break us. But it seems to me that maybe that's a, a compromise or a way for us to look at creating what's fair, which is an interest rate, because if you're borrowing money, but also an incentive to pay it early and avoid that. That might make some, make some sense. And so, I would offer a friendly amendment that the interest be, interest be contingent upon early or on-time payment of the entire sum by June 30th of next year. And if I get a second, then we could add that, and then we can discuss it.
And any further discussion on that?
I mean, I guess I'll probably vote against it, no offense, Mark, but I think we're being pretty fair. I mean, we're giving them an extra year, and I think we are being compassionate here, but we also have to look out for our bottom line, too. That's $249,000 that we don't have in our bank account for that period of time. And, you know, yeah, our finances are kind of okay right now, but we don't know how people are gonna pay their property taxes this year, and we're, we're all in the same boat here, and I think this is a reasonable compromise for us. So, I will vote against the amendment. That said, I don't see that it's a terrible thing.
All right. Any further discussion on that amendment?
I'd like to speak to it.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it adds an incentive to paying it off early, and so, I like it. And then, and also, we don't even know what it is. So, it's kind of like, feels punitive, instead of an actual financial reason for doing it.
I just have a couple of things. For acting like a bank, I don't know of any bank loan that you can get where you pay it off in two chunks. You end up on a monthly payment based on your income, and they open the books, they open your books and look at what your money is, and that's what they determine whether, what they're gonna give you a loan for. So, I, I feel uncomfortable, well, I've already said that. The other thing I think that is missing in this discussion tonight is that this was, this was a payment in lieu of affordable housing for a PUD. The impact to our community has been, is, is already there. We don't have any affordable units being built in this complex, so the, the impact fee for that is the, is the $500,000. That is, we've got half of it, but we don't have all of it, and the impact has already been made in our community. So, should this, should it be punitive? Yes. When you miss a payment at the bank, you get charged, and you get charged a high interest rate. If you, if you miss a payment, a credit card payment, that's what happens. We are being compassionate here. We are considering allowing more time, and with, with a penalty, which, which there, I believe there absolutely should be. With that said, I'm still not in favor of the, the way this is working out. I just don't think it's fair to us, and, and it doesn't set a good precedent for others who might not be able to make their affordable housing payments.
Any further discussion on the friendly amendment?
My only comment was that I, I feel that the interest itself is the motivator to pay it early, so I would be in favor of keeping it there.
Okay. Well, all those in favor of the friendly amendment, raise your hands. All those opposed? And, opposition? I did. Opposition, the, two, two in favor and three against. Now, we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion on the original motion? All right, all in favor? All opposed? And the motion carries on a four-to-one basis. Mark, Annie, I think we'll have Dana and Angie get with you and get the amendments to this, to the documents made, so that we get this thing in writing. They'll be in touch, okay? Thank you. All right, now, on to actual comments from councilors. Steve, anything this evening?
This evening, nothing this evening, thanks.
Ben?
Yeah, I might just make a few comments about our, our work session, and I don't really know where, where we go from here with this, but I'm just gonna make an analogy to how this happened with the housing plan a couple of years ago, and obviously, that's different, but I know at that, when we did the housing effort, we had a two-phase process. One established all the numbers and the needs, and the second established the action plan. And we didn't establish any sort of standing committees, and, as I recall, until we had the action plan actually done. And I say that, because I, I felt like that's a good way to go, because if we don't have a plan, it's not really fair to the folks on the committee, because they don't exactly know what they're supposed to do. And I think that that direction ideally would come from this group. And so, you know, for me, I thought that was a very interesting presentation. I thought the, the numbers and the, the insights in that document are useful and valuable, and I'm glad we did it. I personally would be in favor of having a little bit more of a established action plan before we commit people to go forth and do it. And I, this would take some discussion, but I also kind of wonder, just wondering out loud, if it would, you know, there's items in there that are overlapping with other plans. And I almost wonder if it might be worth taking a look at what parts, what action items are in here, or in the sustainability plan, that are not overlapped into other plans, and focus on those. And I say that because, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll talk about the one or two housing items in here in particular, just because I know that the best, but, you know, there's a housing plan that has those items in the housing plan, but it's further down the list. You know, there's other things that we've already determined in housing that are more important to do before we did, you know, the items that are in here. And so, either we go back in the housing efforts and change the priority list of that, or, or something. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I just think there's overlap, and I think it would be worth pondering on how to separate out some of the items that are not overlapping into other initiatives, and, and that way, there's a kind of a clear set of things that we can do going forward. Just a couple thoughts.
And Ben, thank you for bringing that up. I mean, I, I let that slip by. I didn't make a note earlier. We do need to have a discussion about what direction we want to give staff on the report we received this evening. It occurred to me, based on what I was seeing, I'm not, like you, I'm not ready to wholesale go create some stand, additional standing committee within the city to address these issues. I do think that what I did see was there's probably a need for us extending the life of that particular committee to come up with those plans, and to come up with those kinds of concrete recommendations, I'll call them, that would be helpful. And I think we need probably have some, somebody help us or advise us, and, at least from what I could see, on whether or not...
I didn't have any comments, and Michelle can probably correct me on this, because I'll be wrong on many things, but she sat through there, and Craig probably can, too. And I think, a couple of things, one of the things that came up, Frank, and Steve, you brought this up also, was looking at some kind of metric that we could apply to say when we've reached a tipping point. And I don't think that such a thing exists. We're talking about something that's highly subjective, and it's not something we can go out and statistically throw a number at and say, okay, now we closed the gate and nobody gets in or nobody gets out. We're not Glacier National Park. We can't, that metric to say, okay, enough's enough, isn't there. And I think what ultimately, as we work through this thing, what I really became, realized, and it's kind of what it's geared towards a lot of, and Michelle and Craig can correct me if I'm wrong, is we have a resource here, and this kind of looks at ways to manage all of those resources. Those resources are numbers at trailheads, and so, when we start talking about business information and that thing, it's like telling your business and your customers to not send everybody to the Lion Mountain Trailhead, for example, where 70,000 people will probably go this year. But, at the same time, I think, what's the number, 70,000, or 70% of those people at the Lion Mountain Trailhead, they have seven plates. They don't have Texas plates or California plates. So, we're managing, and the World Cafe, I think, was a super big eye-opener for me, is we had, you know...